I'm Jim Green, I'm NASA's chief scientist. Now this session should provide a unique opportunity for members of the scientific community, emerging space powers, the private sector, and advocates for human exploration beyond low Earth orbit and out into the solar system to really discuss critical questions in the development and the future of international planetary protection policies. You know, the principal rationale for planetary protection policies are really associated with two major elements. The first one is preserve the integrity of the Earth's biosphere. The second, protect any possible biological and environmental integrity of solar system bodies for scientific investigation. You know, these rationales for planetary protection really take two main approaches: the control of forward contamination and the control of backward contamination, and these will be discussed today. What areas really need our constant oversight and policy updates and changes? Well, the environment that we're in is NASA and China have announced returning samples from Mars. And the more we know about Mars, the more we recognize that it is potentially a habitable environment perhaps today, but certainly in its past. Also, the exploration of ocean worlds, our finding of huge resources of water below icy crusts of many moons that have evolved over 4.6 billion years. In addition, the private sector has also currently eyeing developments that will take us to the moon and also to Mars. Human exploration beyond the moon and then on to Mars can also challenge us in our policies that must evolve and accommodate these. Today I have a real distinguished panel. Our panel of experts today are John Rumel. John is the senior scientist from the SETI Institute. He will be discussing more of the history and background of planetary protection. Anthea Costenas is next, and she will talk about COSPAR's panel on planetary protection. And then Yang Hong, he's the chief designer, China Academy of Space Technologies. He will be talking about China perspective. Andy Spry, who's the advisor to the NASA Planetary Protection Officer and an employee from SETI, will be talking about developing current technologies for life detection and planetary protection. And then Eric Stalmer. Eric is the president of Commercial Space Flight Federation in the United States, and he will give us a commercial spaceflight perspective. So without further ado, let me introduce John Rumel.
Good afternoon and thanks, Jim, for your introduction. I've been asked to provide some background on the subject of planetary protection and to give you my opinion on the state of planetary protection activities today. If this were the planetary protection racket that some think it is, then I would say that the status of planetary protection is good. And point out that it would be advisable for you to meet those requirements so that your planet or mission doesn't meet with unforeseen difficulties. Me and the boys wouldn't like to see that happen. But of course, and much to my disappointment, planetary protection provisions originally known as planetary quarantine provisions don't reflect an additional income stream for government officials, but rather reflect a specific responsibility to the possibility that Earth organisms might find a habitable environment on some other solar system body and grow there, screwing up a very expensive program of astrobiological study and flight missions. Or that on a great day, when a sample is returned from a potentially habitable place in the solar system, we'll make a momentous discovery that there is life on Mars or Europa or Enceladus, as we find out that that life is dangerous to us and/or to the Earth's biosphere. In the first case, we don't need to be carrying out our own contamination all over this system at considerable expense and possibly losing the opportunity to study extraterrestrial life, period. In the second case, it's easy to find fault with the program that puts the entire biosphere at risk for the benefit of some scientists who want to save a buck, a yen, a pound, or a euro, because of a course that they already know that life is not a threat. Trust them. That would be stupid in multiple languages. To counter these undesirable possibilities, planetary protection provisions were originated early in the space age to address the concerns of a humbler science community. They included Nobel laureates Joshua Letterberg, Harold Yuri, and scientists like Carl Sagan, who worried most about the forward contamination of other worlds, and to address the simple precautions that would later be voiced by that great investigator Bart Simpson, who stated that "science class should not end in tragedy." My guess is that Bill Nye envies that quote. After the late 1950s and early 1960s, such planetary protection concerns became enshrined, albeit loosely, in international law. With the adoption of the Outer Space Treaty in 1967, planetary protection became a required element in space exploration and use through the OST's Article IX, which requires that the parties pursuing studies of outer space and other celestial bodies should, quote, "conduct exploration of them so as to avoid their harmful contamination and also adverse changes in the environment of the Earth resulting from the introduction of extraterrestrial matter." Article IX goes on to say that "the parties in the treaty where necessary shall adopt appropriate measures for these purposes," presumably as part of the authorization and continuing supervision of space activities required by Article VI of the same treaty. Article IX also requires consultation on any actions that would cause potentially harmful interference with activities of other states' parties in the peaceful exploration and use of outer space. Thus, while a number of states' parties and their space agencies have established planetary protection policies to guide their efforts when conducting interplanetary missions, there's a long history of coordination and collaboration in this area that predates the OST. A consensus international standard for planetary protection has been developed through COSPAR, founded in 1958 by the International Council of Scientific Unions. By design, this Committee on Space Research was consultative with the United Nations Committee on the Peaceful Uses of Outer Space. And to document its role in providing for an ongoing international collaboration and consultation in the area of biological contamination, COPUOS in 2017 recognized the longstanding role of COSPAR in maintaining planetary protection policy as a reference standard for spacefaring nations and in guiding compliance with Article IX of the Outer Space Treaty. Great. Athena Costenas is here today to talk to you about the COSPAR efforts in the control of forward contamination of other worlds and avoiding backward contamination, and will tell you how planetary protection is addressed within COSPAR. Her presence is another way that the status of planetary protection is good. The changes that have made her the new face of COSPAR planetary protection efforts was specifically requested of the COSPAR president by myself and Gerhard Kaminick, the two previous chairs of COSPAR's Panel on Planetary Protection. After the extensive though imperfect planetary quarantine efforts for both lunar materials and astronauts during the Apollo program, the focus of planetary exploration and planetary protection shifted to robotic missions. In the intervening years, planetary protection policies and practices have matured considerably, although through integration of advice and recommendations from the scientific community in the form of study reports by the U.S. Space Studies Board and from others, including the European Science Foundation and the European Space Science Committee. That's another way that the status of planetary protection is good. The most recent Space Studies Board report on planetary protection policy development processes contains valuable data and makes a reasonable and important recommendations to NASA and COSPAR. And I look forward to seeing those recommendations and the basic understanding of planetary protection described in that report reflected in the planetary protection work of NASA and as appropriate internationally. Planetary protection is now firmly established as a part of robotic mission planning, and provisions that can actively be incorporated into the human missions on Mars, especially those that are improvements to what was envisioned in the Apollo efforts, are currently under multinational study, chiefly through COSPAR. It should be obvious that space missions can hope to contribute to the astrobiological exploration of other worlds only if their associated contaminations controlled and understood. That applies both to robotic and human missions, trying to delve deeper and look more thoroughly for Mars life than has ever before been possible. While it can be difficult to prepare a spacecraft to the level of cleanliness obtained by the Viking landers, it's not impossible even for spacecraft not originally designed for such levels. But in that case, it can be more costly. Such control and understanding is a bit more challenging for human missions to Mars, where Earth organisms may find a home both inside the human habitat, in the humans themselves, and under the surface of the planet. Because humans don't take kindly to being re-engineered, to mitigate the potential for danger to Earth or human astronauts from the mission to Mars, planetary protection must be acknowledged as an important element for the success of such missions included very early in the design and development process. That is happening now, another way that planetary protection status is good. But then there's a question that many are asking, but few have the understanding to answer. Is the existence of planetary protection provisions, which can put difficult requirements on missions beyond Earth orbit, a hindrance to the commercial development of space? I would categorically state that they are not a hindrance, but an absolute necessity. That's another way that the status of planetary protection is good. At present, it's being recognized as being important to commercial development, and there's a supplementary interest in the commercial space community to make sure that planetary protection requirements and regulations are well-founded. The most prominent call is not for no regulation in this area, but for the right regulation. The COSPAR provisions could be a sound basis for such regulation if adapted in an appropriate way, and should be noted that current planetary protection provisions really have a market effect only on missions to five solar system bodies: Mars, Europa, Enceladus, Titan, and perhaps Triton. And arguably, of those, only Mars is in the current view as a target for commercial missions. There's much less interest in the small bodies that may be the focus of resource extraction missions. They're not affected. But not all commercial missions are there for asteroid mining or lunar ice prospecting. So the second question is, are planetary protection provisions going to stop Mars tourism? I would answer no, but ignorance of Mars certainly can. Over the decades from 1964, when the first successful Mars mission was flown, and despite the disappointment that many had with Mariner IV's images of cratered surface, a search for life on Mars had been the major and most consistent motivation for conducting more Mars missions. Multiple orbiters, landers, and rovers had done their best to uncover the secrets of Mars as an abode of life, but so far, the scientific case for life is not settled, nor do most investigators feel that we have enough data to have a valid opinion on its presence or absence. Likewise, we do not have enough data to decide whether it is advisable, let alone ethical, to expose humans directly to Martian materials without protecting against its effects. Mars dust is pervasive and may be both difficult to avoid and dangerous to breathe. Likewise, through the dust or by some other means, the potential for living entities to accompany Martian materials into the human body is not ruled out for any human Mars mission, scenario currently being envisioned, or more specifically, being funded. Mars may be dangerous to human life, and most tour operators agree that the tourists should not be used as guinea pigs, especially if they might fail to return home if taken sick. That's a basic tenet of tour operations: you lose money if the tourists don't go home when it's over. Taking a more expansive look, it should be noted that humans might also be dangerous to Mars itself, and not just to Mars science. If the nature and identity of Earth organisms transported to Mars is not established, then, like organisms that are routinely kept out of agricultural environments on Earth, human-carried microbes and even larger organisms could end up being a greater threat to the potential for long-term productive human habitation on that planet. The potential threat to Mars agriculture would be a key source of biological concern. For now, I think it should be obvious that the real difficulties with Mars exploitation and Mars tourism are not in the area of planetary protection, but in our not yet having the basic tools to live in that environment in the first place. See the Global Networking Forum on Thursday at 15:30, and perhaps afterward, you will understand it when I say that the first Earthling to do EVA on Mars may be living in a hamster ball on Earth today. Finally, another thing that causes me to suggest the current status of planetary protection is good is that the space agencies are both acknowledging it and investing in it. NASA has brought to a new planetary protection officer and is hiring a deputy. NASA has identified technology requirements, not only for mission systems, but to understand how to build science instruments that can withstand any and all the rigors of currently available sterilization methodologies. And NASA is looking to adopt or develop new sterilization capabilities as well. Other agencies are doing the same thing, as seen in JAX's new organizational measures to formalize planetary protection activities for Japan. Likewise, and with an international focus, space agencies are looking to understand the specifics of the possible survival of terrestrial microbes in some environments on Mars today. These astrobiological studies are not only dependent on planetary protection provisions for the continuation during space missions, but planetary protection provisions can be tailored to the new data such studies can bring to our understanding of life in the solar system and perhaps in the universe beyond. Thank you.
My name is Athena Costenas. I am from Paris Observatory in France, and I am currently also the chair of the European Space Sciences Committee of the European Science Foundation that John just mentioned. And I've also been since July facing the new challenge of being the chair of the COSPAR Panel for Planetary Protection, which challenge I'm sure even today I haven't realized how big it is, but I'm getting to it. I usually give conferences with a lot of nice images, nice figures, nice things of places in the outer solar system that I dearly love, like you heard, Enceladus, Europa, Ganymede, and Titan. And today, I don't have any pictures to show to you, but that doesn't mean that I don't care about these objects. And I think the whole question here about planetary protection is what do we care about? And we care about ourselves, and we care about the objects that are dear to our research. COSPAR is an organization that I'm sure you all know about. It's one of the scientific committees of the International Council for Science; that's what we used to call ICSU before. And COSPAR's mission with the planetary protection is to maintain and promulgate the planetary protection policy for the references of all the countries in the world that have a relation to space and to space exploration. And it's doing this both as an international standard on procedures on how to avoid organic constituent, biological contamination, space exploration, but also to provide accepted guidelines, and I say accepted guidelines, we don't force anybody, and requirements in this area to guide the compliance with the wording of the Outer Space Treaty that has been signed so far, but more than 107 countries, I think, so this is to show you the adherence to this treaty. So the COSPAR planetary protection policy is to ensure that two things, and now I'm repeating what Jim said at the beginning, ensure that the conduct of scientific investigations, and many of you here are investigators, researchers, of possible extraterrestrial life forms, whether they're still there, living currently, or they're remnants of past life or precursors, is not jeopardized. The other thing is that we have the Earth, our own planet, and it must be protected from the potential hazard posed by extraterrestrial material that we can bring back in a spacecraft returning from an interplanetary mission as a sample or not knowing exactly. Therefore, for certain space missions, you've heard this before, for targeting some of the object in the solar system, we need to put a control on contamination, and this is to be imposed in accordance with the issuance implementing the policy. So COSPAR enjoys a lot of adherence from all over the world. The executive secretary-director-general is sitting right here, Jean-Luc Falus. Thank you for coming. NASA, for instance, has maintained compliance with the Outer Space Treaty by following the COSPAR policy for years now, and we're grateful for that. But more recently, Emirates, who had a Mars orbiter mission coming on, came to COSPAR to look for some guidelines. You don't have to reinvent the wheel every time we're here, and you don't have to start from scratch. I want to say, I want to pay tribute to Gerek Kaminick, because I've been listening to his presentations, and I have shamelessly stolen a lot of his work, to say that he always starts his presentations with saying, "What we do not do." And what we do not do is we do not interfere with the implementation. We're about guidelines and policy, but we do not tell people how to implement the guidelines, and we do not deal with the private sector business, so other people will answer these questions. We do not deal with threats from near-Earth objects, and we do not deal with space debris, and there's a list there. But we do deal with some things. And the COSPAR Panel for Planetary Protection now, it has as a main objective to develop, to maintain, and to promote and facilitate planetary protection knowledge. The first thing people need to know is those guidelines, how do they apply? What is the policy? What are the requirements? And what are the plans? And how can you prevent the harmful effects of contamination? And to do that, we do that through studies, symposia, workshops, topical meetings. COSPAR organized all kinds of things, and Alisa here organized the number, and others, to provide the international forums that are necessary for people to exchange and communicate on the information in this area. These policies are always based on the most recent, peer-reviewed, scientific knowledge. I have to tell you that we start out with the scientific knowledge and the scientific understanding of what's going on out there in all of our fields. The studies are very thorough. We come from different directions, but it's a bottom-up approach, and it's the scientists at the basis of all these policies. And so the principle is that COSPAR planetary protection policy should enable the exploration of the solar system, enable it. We're not prohibiting, we're not coming in to prevent space missions and space exploration from taking place. We're there to help it. So it's, as I said, not the purpose of the panel to specify the means, but which adherence to the COSPAR planetary protection policies achieved. The best and the most effective means to adhere to the planetary protection requirements is reserved to the engineering judgment of the organization responsible for the planetary mission. It's subject to a certification of compliance, of course, of the COSPAR planetary protection requirements, but it's the national or the international authority responsible for the mission that has the charge of the implementation. So we do not implement, we do not say how to implement, but for sure, it's something that a space agency has to take into account. And the way that we have to put this forward is to communicate. And the way we work is to study all the scientific documents that I've described before that come to our attention, look at the available studies, look at the recommendations, the outcomes of the workshops, and then we take all that on board. The panel is going to meet at more regular meetings, because of course, one of the new challenges is that science is progressing. New investigations are coming on board, new results, new findings. We hear every day about the outer solar system, about new findings also on Mars and other different places, and we have to take all that on board at a faster pace. Because, trust me, I understand very well why it takes a long time to have a policy on board. It's not an easy thing to do. People have to consider everything and come with something that is useful to the community, but we cannot wait for a very long time. If a new mission is coming on board, new findings come on board, we have to take them into consideration and look for future missions, what has to be implemented, to preserve not only our environment, if we're talking about simple return, but also to prevent destroying the environment where we are going. If we're going to one of the worlds that are dear to my heart, like the icy moons, I don't want these worlds contaminated, but I don't even want them to lose their uniqueness, the environment that's there, not just for life. Astrobiology is not just for life. So in the modern era, we have all the challenges that you've heard about before. We have the Martian moons, for instance, categorization coming on board, and it's on our table. We have the outer solar system exploration, the potential habitats out there. We have the sample-return missions, and we have human exploration also. And human exploration is a whole new chapter to see how we're going to proceed with putting humans on Mars or elsewhere. But we've come a long way. It's been more than 50 years of robotic exploration. This exploration era is maturing. And so we have to take all these challenges into consideration, and the way we're going to do it with the panel is that we've brought in a whole host of scientists, experts in the different fields, but also representatives from the space agencies. And they're going, that's about, I think I have about 20 people now, 19, 20 people on board. And this panel is going to sit and look at all the studies, look at all the information we have at hand today, look at the current categorization, and make recommendations. The recommendations that this panel makes goes to the Bureau and the Council of COSPAR. Our meeting, first meeting of the new panel, is going to be in January, January 2019. After that, the Bureau will meet in Paris in March 2019, will put our recommendations forward. If the Bureau validates these recommendations, then we can hope to have an update of the current policy of planetary protection for COSPAR. This is the way it works. I know some of you may think it takes time, but I can assure you it will take less time than it used to take before, because we really want to work and invest space with this, and look at all the issues that I have mentioned before. But the most important aspect, again, is not only that we inform the scientific community, we inform the international community. For instance, we go to the community on the peaceful uses of outer space, COPUOS of the United Nations, as well as various other bilateral and multilateral organizations. And we need to bring all the stakeholders in and get the policy consensus heard about and validated on an international basis. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Yang Hong from China Academy of Space Technology. As you know, one of the goal of the human space exploration is to answer the question the origin of life on Earth and exciting of the Earth-like life in other body. So the space exploration carried out by space engineers in the world must obey the follow rules. One is to prevent the Earth's properties from the polluting environment of the body. It is the forward contamination. Another is avoid the biological sample polluting the environment of the Earth. It is back contamination. First, I introduce China lunar exploration and Mars exploration. China's deepest deep-space exploration mission has conducted five lunar exploration missions. China has launched the three satellites, Chang'e 1, 2, 3, around the moon, and Chang'e 3 landing in the moon. And next will be next year, the Chang'e 5 is an unmanned lunar sampling and return mission. As the classified and restricted return mission, will clean and record samples, sharing devices, et cetera, that come in contact with the moon's samples of the related equipment and the material for testing and recording to ensure that the returns, the samples, are consistent with the original state. China's Mars exploration mission for Mars China's Mars exploration mission, for Mars, for Mars exploration mission, the requirement of PP should be determined in order to prevent the forward pollution, pollution to Mars. The ongoing work include the following aspects. One is to make a series of PP strategies for Mars, include the analysis, the characteristics of the mission, classify the mission type and requirements, determine the method of the detecting and sterilization, define the timing of the PP during the manufacturing. And for China must next training workers on PP requirements, choose the purpose time to train the workers responsible for the assembling and testing. Text, text microbe on probe and sterilize. And for China manned spacecraft with built macrobe analysis and material evolution, research the material of spacecraft and make the macrobe control. And popular, popularization is establish the link to the PPOs project, publish the several article on general, participate in scientific conference and, and popularize the knowledge of PP. Another, the cast join the PPOSS, PPOs, the project as an international partner. This package is supported by EC and the Horizon 2020 program. This project has the six, six work package, the program manager, measurement and coordinate technical, technology development and policy of PP and etc. Now, I give the pro packs of PP technologies in the future. One is the explore a border range of the sterilization method, include this disinfecting, radiation method and etc. Two is the establish the database of the aerospace material, material properties. By building the database of material properties, it's possible to make the statics on the sterilization method and apply capable the material. Thus before designing material with the same sterilization can be selected as far as possible, which can reduce, reduce the repetition of the process. Adopt a septic assembly procedure. Parts and the product should be sterilization by special method and the process of patch should be prepared as before the general assembly. The package should be opened in high cleanliness, cleanliness environment. The workers should be control the contamination of themselves. Contamination control of the transporting, the package case needs to be designed sealed to maintain the positive pressure inside so that it can prevent the air outside into the case. Before the putting the spacecraft in, the package case should, should be cleaned first and then pumped into the high cleanliness gas. During the transport, the case is forbidden to open without permission. After transportation, the package case should be environment of ASU 8 level. Contamination control after launching. Before launching, the sample and landing, lander should be treated and outer, outer layer should be covered with a build shield. After spacecraft flying out the atmosphere, the bills shield can be discarded. Contamination control the something, sample of the retaining to avoid release the space substance to the Earth's build circle. The return sample must be sealed automatically. The sample which was brought back should be carefully disposed. And finally, the future consists of PP. As the international responsibility, the whole world should strictly obey and execute of PP rules. China lunar and Mars exploration is conducting relevant technique, technical research. At the same time, China is close the cooperation with the international professional group to ensure the PP is in place. With the extending, with the extending of the PP concept, the human mission would gradually conduct more research on the PP. More new, more new technique would be, or can make the PP much more easier and efficient. Thank you. Thank you very much.
My name is Andy Spry. It should be Dr. Castori Venkateshwaran occupying this slot, but I had a phone call from him at dinner on Friday saying, hey, I'm not in Bremen, I'm at home, will you stand in for me? So I'm deputizing for him. So I've had kind of two days to figure out what I was going to say, but he kindly sent me 20 slides. I'm not going to talk about his 20 slides entirely, I will give you some bullets, but I'm going to try and convey the ethos of the work that he's been doing and, and put on some, some of my own thoughts on top. But first, some ancient history, that is to say, before I was born, the first planetary protection officer at NASA was given some advice by the Space Studies Board, which I still have access to as a transparency. And basically, there is a three-phrased sentence. The first says accord the highest priority to prevention of the biological contamination of Mars. Okay, so that's quite clear. So that's the what. When, for as long as is necessary until we understand, I'm paraphrasing now, until we understand about the presence of a potential Martian life form. Okay? And then how, how do we do that? Basically, you are needing to explore accordingly. So you're, you're basically not contaminating the Mars environment by the spacecraft that you send. And so with that in mind, the JPL missions from the 90s and early 2000s in particular had a, a routine to implementing that according to the mission. And as part of the development of planetary protection implementation, it's important to understand what it is about terrestrial biology that you're flying on your spacecraft. And so a lot of Venkatesh's work has been to look at that both for robotic missions, but also looking forward to crewed missions. So I taught you a little bit, in 2005, for about 10 years, Venkatesh and I worked together. And the first thing we did was to establish a method to obtain a genetic inventory for a spacecraft. So that is, you know, who's there from a passenger list point of view? And so that program was advocated by John in his then role as the planetary protection officer, and it was funded by Jim's previous organization, the, part of Jim's previous organization, the Mars Program, to try and figure out how we get this passenger list using modern molecular methods that are adopted from the life sciences industry. And so at that time, the capability was now to be able to look at DNA as an indicator of the presence of an organism. And so that research proceeded for sort of four or five years to figure out how we could get samples from very clean spacecraft and analyze them for the presence of DNA. And we ended up in a situation where you could detect about 2,000 different organisms on a spacecraft, in a spacecraft, in a spacecraft clean room that would be associated with the spacecraft. Okay? So that's your passenger list. It's not definitive to that you would actually be sending those live organisms to Mars, but that's a potential passenger list, kind of a. Venkatesh then took that on to the crude spaceflight, looking at, well, what is the ISS like in the context? Well, you know, we're going to be sending robotic missions, but if we were to send humans, what, what's the ISS like as a surrogate for a future Mars crewed mission? And basically, they found that you can get several hundreds of different organisms which are commonly present, but every time there's a perturbation in the environment, the spectrum of organism you could detect would change. So for example, when you had a, a crew change or a cargo delivery, you would introduce a new set of organisms. There will be some fluctuation for a while and then it will settle down to some sort of new norm, which was different from the previous norm in terms of the numbers of organisms and the types of organisms that are present. And that's information. What we don't know is what to do with that information because we don't know how to predict very well and, and we don't understand what the impact of the changes are very well. So if Venkatesh was stood, was stood here, he would be saying at this point, ignorance is not bliss. And so as we look forward to crewed missions going out to Mars and elsewhere, ensuring the safety of the crew means that we have to have this continuous monitoring to see what is really there and then whether that's important or not. So Venkatesh's current activity is called Omics in Space, and that is an attempt to take the latest iteration of terrestrial capability and biomedical, the biomedical world into a system where you can do everything in space. So you'd be able to take the samples on a routine level and the astronaut would be able to do the entire DNA RNA protein metabolomics analysis in space. They're starting just with DNA, by the way. And then be able to crunch the numbers and see if it matters or not. Do we need to care about this either from an astronaut health point of view, a planetary protection point of view? Maybe it's also an opportunity to do indicator work for, you know, changes in mutations as a result of radiation. You could do radiation monitoring that way, for example. So that Omics in Space program is taking a handheld size, sort of old fashioned mobile phone size DNA sequencer and adapting that for use in space. The addition, additional factor is, well, how do you get the sample from wherever you're sampling from, the human or the surface into the device? And so there are some consumables associated with that. And the technology of 3D printing allows you to reuse and recycle potentially the, the consumables that you would do for that. So they have a challenge of zero gravity liquid processing and high power computing requirement and the usual mass and volume budget challenges as well as the consumables. So they're, that's just a year or two's worth of work for them. I'm sure they'll get it done. But, you know, all of that will allow us to get to a point where we can be reasonably comfortable and not entirely risk-free, but reasonably comfortable that whatever we're going to do when we get to Mars with humans, we'll be able to understand the effects of Mars on us and us on Mars. And we, we didn't ought to be in a position where that work is not done, where we would be having to rely on assertion as opposed to fact. So, so I just share a couple of anecdotes about assertion. One assertion which people may be familiar with, if you've hung around in planetary protection circles for any length of time, you may be heard about the rabbits in Australia. But that was the assertion by an English noble that him releasing 24 wild rabbits into Australia would do no harm. And so, you know, 50 years later, they are just a plague and, you know, the continuing problem in, in Australia and, and the biggest cause of environmental degradation in, in Australia, just a catastrophe from the point of view of the natural flora and fauna of that environment. And another example, which you won't have heard of unless you've heard me talk before, is one where Andy Spry and his undergraduate colleagues all asserted that the, in a paper review, that the black smoker bacteria could not possibly be a real thing because they defied the laws of biochemistry of proteins and therefore couldn't exist. And so the black smoker was merely a reflection of probably what the author was smoking rather than any science. Needless to say, we were proven wrong with that assertion and three or four years later, I am relying on the thermostable enzymes that the black smoker bacteria produce in order to generate data for my DNA. So, you know, just things change quickly in, in science and we ought to be sure of our facts rather than, than our assertions. And in that, there are some surprises of Mars. My planetary science colleagues tell me that from orbit, to get a mineralic signal, you need to have roughly 10% abundance of that signal. And so you're looking at, you know, what is 10% of the environment like at any one time in chunks? So whenever we get to the surface and get ground truth at a higher level of fidelity, at a higher level of resolution, we're always seeing surprises. So, you know, for example, at the Opportunity Landing Site, there's, you know, the first images that came were showing these blueberries, which nobody expected that. And the wheel drag that, that Spirit had exposed sulfate minerals, nobody expected that. And same for Phoenix with the perchlorates and, you know, MSL more recently with, with the organic discovery. So we have some way to go in terms of learning about Mars and learning about Earth. And so from, from my perspective, as we're heading forward with new policies for planetary protection, it's very important that we do that on a knowledge-based approach at the right level of fidelity with the right information obtained in the right way to be able to discriminate what is a good strategy and a bad strategy in terms of trying to maintain Mars in its pristine condition and maintain the samples coming back from Mars in a, a condition where that we can be sure of the life detection is, is good and not of Florida origin or anywhere else in that manner. And also to make sure that the astronauts we send there are safe and can, can be returned safely. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
I am going to set the stage for you with a disclaimer by telling you that I am not a scientist, which I'm glad we got that out of the way, that we heard from five of the brightest scientists in the room on planetary protection. And I appreciate what Athena said earlier, describing what you don't do. And, and then you can define a little easier what you do, do. And when I took this job at the Commercial Space Flight Federation, I thought I knew what I had to do and what I, what I don't do. And that list of what I don't do is starting to go into the other column of what I am now doing. So when I was approached about the planetary protection issue, I said, I didn't know that we really did this. And four years ago, we, when I took the job, we weren't really discussing this issue too much because it fell in the realm of NASA and COSPAR and the international community. But things have changed in the four years that I have been a part of the Commercial Space Flight Federation for the better and, and for the advancement. Space Flight Federation, for the better, and for the advancement of science in a lot of ways. So just a real quick briefer, the Commercial Space Flight Federation is an organization that represents about 85 different entities that have an interest in the commercial space sector. That could be from the ground floor, from the spaceports, to the infrastructure, to the launch providers. One of our founders, we had several founders, but one of them was a guy named Elon Musk, who got this conversation started with us a little bit by launching a car around Mars, which was not, well, that was his way of engaging us in the conversation, I guess. But the launch companies, small satellite companies, and people doing things on the International Space Station, and then beyond. And what are we going to do in exploration? And then that, as we're pushing this exploration envelope more, I think that's more of the reason why the private sector needs to have somewhat of a voice at the table. And I appreciate my colleagues here having me here to talk about that. I also wear a second hat a little bit, is in that I'm on the President's, President Trump reestablished the National Space Council, which represents all the different heads of the agencies in the US that have any interest in space, whether it's Transportation, Department of Defense, Commerce. And in that group, in that body, he brought together a user advisory group, about 20 people from industry, from academia, from the astronaut community. And so I'm one of those people. And so the benefit of that job is that I don't have to speak as much as I get to listen. And what we've been tasked to do by the Executive Secretary of the National Space Council, Scott Pace, is to get out to the community and listen to what the concerns are. And a lot of it is, you know, LEO commercialization, or launch and reentry regulatory reform. But as I'm finding more and more, planetary protection is becoming one of those issues that people want to talk about. And what we're trying to do is, is this an issue that should be elevated, you know, at the National Space Council? But at the same token, I know that within the National Space Council is the NASA Administrator, who has been very, very forward-looking on a lot of these issues. And especially selfishly, for me, engaging the private sector and the commercial companies. And just recently, on the NAC, the NASA Advisory Committee, they started up a subcommittee dealing with regulatory, is it legal and regulatory, or regulatory and policy, I think, what they're doing? And they have a space law attorney, a recovering space law attorney, Mike Gold, who is helping out on that and helping shape some of these policies. So the discussion, you know, on how do we prevent harmful contamination, how do the planetary protection, what are we doing? I think it's important to have the commercial sector there, but I'm also smart enough to know that you have to count on the experts, you know, far better for, you know, policy person to be lecturing, you know, scientists on how they should do their business. And I'm keenly aware of that. But I do appreciate that the recognition that the commercial space industry is growing. We have, I saw a graph the other day, I think I represent about 12 different launch companies. And there's a graph out there that there's over 74 companies in development or production of launch vehicles. So there's a paradigm shift that's going on. The rules that we, that regulated us, that were written 50 years ago, it's changing now. And we see it changing. And this is one of the things, back to the user advisory group, and what the Vice President on the Space Council is seeing, is that we need to make changes to these outdated requirements. We have a, we have a company, a remote sensing satellite company, and it was started by a young entrepreneur, you know, some of the age, probably the age of some of the folks in this room. But when they wrote the laws on remote sensing, he wasn't even born yet. So that's, and that's 92. So there's youth in our industry, thank God. But so those are some of the areas that we have to look at. And I think it goes hand in glove at looking at, you know, as COSPAR is recalibrating themselves and reconfiguring how they want to look at things, and bringing in more outside interest. And I think we all appreciate that. So the commercial sector wants to be a part of that. I think we're seeing that in the influence right now with the Outer Space Treaty, with what the House and our Senate is doing. Of course, they can't figure it out correctly. One wants it to, Article Six to go to Commerce, the other wants it to go to Transportation. I'm just glad that they're talking about the Outer Space Treaty, which any of them didn't even know existed. So that's a step forward in progress. But there is, there's a lot of, I think, opportunity here for, you know, commercial, government, industry to be working together. And I'm happy to be part of that discussion. And I want to yield kind of the rest of my time so we can have this discussion and take questions from the audience. So with that, I look forward to your questions.
Well, now, the floor is open. We have a really great opportunity for everyone here to ask as many questions as you like. And we'll start out with this gentleman in the front.
Thank you. Thank you. Hey, good afternoon. My name's Grant Demery. My question's for Mr. Stoller. I wanted to ask about the total cost of compliance with planetary protection. Right now, for robotic missions, it's a few percent of the total mission costs. What would you estimate, and I know it's difficult to estimate, what would you estimate the cost will be for the human policy for Mars?
That's a great question. I don't, I don't even know who is looking at that issue on the total cost of it. I would probably defer somewhat to NASA on what their cost estimates could be, but I would have to try to get back to you on that one, because I'm not really sure on that.
So I can say a few things about that. In terms of the cost, it really starts out with the requirements. Planetary protection policies are accepted by NASA. NASA, based on a mission architecture, then develops a series of requirements. Now, those requirements can be stringent. You know, so like for Mars sample return, we had several requirements on the first rover, which is called Mars 2020, which will cut rock, you know, about what looks like a piece of chalk, sleeve it, and then subsequent missions will return it. And so what's critical is understanding the bio burden on that, reducing that to as low a level as possible, having another part to that system that produces a blank. So we bring a rock with us, we core it with the same system, that's sleeved. And then that, of course, is something that we then can compare against with the other rocks. So all that additional activity is not really 2%, can be higher than that, really depends upon the architecture of the mission and what you're going to do. So it starts with the policy, then requirements based on the mission architecture, and then it can be costed.
Yeah. I'd like to point out that the costs really are affected if you don't think of it in time, if you don't build it in from the beginning. That's when you get huge costs. Imagine that you're going to send humans to Mars, and we finally did the homework that we needed to do so that we had some way for them to usefully be on the surface of Mars, some kind of a portable life support system and a suit that would work, keep the dust out of the habitat, et cetera. But you decide that there's certain parts of Mars that you're going to go ahead and give over to human influence. You call them exploration zones, I can call them contamination zones, it doesn't really matter. Those are going to be those places where we're going to accept a certain amount of biological material that humans bring with them. Where you run into the cost is when the guy says, but I want to go over here, I don't want to go there, you know? And then you have the discussion, and you try to plan it out, so that the human-associated material doesn't go into what on Mars are called special regions, where you could actually grow Earth-origin bacteria, et cetera. You'd probably want to stay away from a cave, because a cave might be one of those cool places that you could go and find that there's actually some access to ice, if not liquid water itself. You, you know, probably stay out of Hell's Basin because it's too damn windy. And anything in between is probably okay. But that's, when a decision is made, then the costs follow along. The hard part really was to make that suit in the first place, to make a life support system that you can dependably call on to keep you alive without Earth bacteria that you brought with you killing off your food plants, or your salad, or whatever. So the costs are multivariate. But I suspect that in the long run, given the nature of the things you have to worry about on Mars, where you're going to spend that money is on a clean drilling system to go down and look for water. And there's nothing more expensive on Mars than liquid water that you can access easily. You don't want to put Earth bacteria in there so that they actually transfer and cause that water to mineralize. Because then all of a sudden, what you had goes away. And it goes away because of biological contamination. We see that on Earth aquifers on a regular basis. So is that a cost? Well, yeah. But is it a useful cost? Absolutely.
So those regions on Mars with, that potentially have liquid are called special regions. And indeed, human exploration has to make the decision if they're going to special regions to be able to get access to water, or going to, at least initially, to non-special regions, where they have a lot more to learn about the environment, et cetera. So those mission architectures would be very different in many ways. Another aspect of that is a region where there's a potentially significant amount of buried ice. It's not an aquifer to contaminate, but you still have material you have to bring in, reduce the overburden, bring in the ice, melt it, and then use that water. And so there's more discussions in those areas that need to be made in planetary protection processes.
So another aspect, and it doesn't only have to do with the cost, it has to do with the whole mission, is that what part of the mission or the spacecraft you want to decontaminate or sterilize? For instance, if you're going with a spacecraft, like we're going also with ExoMars or Mars or elsewhere, and you just land and make observations from inside, let's say remotely, it's one thing. If you're bringing one of the instruments out, you're going to dig, then that instrument also has to be decontaminated and sterilized. So that would increase the cost, but that would also increase the complexity of the mission. So the whole way we explore robotically an object is a complex aspect, both in terms of cost and in terms of mission architecture. And it reminds me very much what we do also when we protect our space missions from, for instance, radiation effects. When you send out a mission and you want to make sure all the instruments are working, you may want to put a thicker shield, for instance, in case of Europa, because otherwise the radiation is going to destroy your measurements. So all of this comes into consideration when you're doing space exploration.
We have some other questions? Go ahead, grab the mic.
Thank you. Mark Williamson, this is a question about the process of moving from a recommendation to actual planetary protection. Now, I think most people would find it quite easy to see why a scientist would sign up for a planetary protection procedure, because their data is going to be compromised if they cause some damage or pollution. But what is the process in terms of making a recommendation to a commercial organization? It's been said that they don't really need to do anything if they're mining an asteroid or something. So there is no law, as far as I'm concerned, I'm just looking for some guidance on how you see it actually working, going from a recommendation to actually physically protecting a planetary surface.
Well, I can give you a situation in the United States. There are other countries with other laws, but in general, there's some agency that provides supervision and authorization, continuing authorization of what goes on in space. And so we mentioned Elon Musk and his, you know, motor car. And you basically have the Federal Aviation Administration now responsible for that. FAA turns to NASA and says, is this okay for planetary protection? NASA goes, we don't have the data, we have Elon on record in tweets, but tweets aren't necessarily data, maybe you should get something a little bit more authoritative than that. You get that, and you realize that not only is it okay from planetary protection perspective, it's not even covered by the policy it's so okay, because on the launch days that they have in mind, if they launch the way they say they're going to launch, it's not going to ever encounter another solar system body. So not covered by the policy must be okay. If we're going to come close to an asteroid that had no indications of the evidence of extraterrestrial life, et cetera, or no likelihood that it's even going to provide information about the origin and evolution of life, then that is called a category one mission, it's an exchange of letters, and it's all over, but the cryon, nobody cares. Near Shoemaker, for example, landed on Eros, but nobody was worried it was going to contaminate it, nobody was thinking that it was going to find out anything about COSPAR's interested area in astrobiology. So that, you know, that happens, and you basically, NASA was operating under its own authority with respect to Near Shoemaker, but, you know, the FAA was able to turn around and tell SpaceX, you know, go ahead and launch as far as we're concerned, because they consulted with NASA. How that process is going to work in the future, Eric mentioned, the House and the Senate have different versions of who's going to authorize and supervise. And of course, the House is also trying to fix remote sensing law at the same time. So we'll see how that shakes out. The Space Council has gone with the House version effectively. And so until such time as the law gets that straightened out, the FAA is still very much in the picture.
Can I add to that real quickly? I think, I think the, the commercial companies are looking for those type of recommendations. I saw it firsthand, one of our companies, Moon Express, was, you know, as they launched a rover or a spacecraft to the moon, what is the process that they go through? Is it through State Department, or is it through the FAA, or is it DOD? And they had to literally shop around their proposal to six different organizations, six different government agencies. And so I think we're trying to find what, you know, these recommendations and a path forward to, you know, kind of play by the rules and to, you know, respect the work that others are doing and that insight. And a lot of times, you know, some of these companies may not have that institutional knowledge on where to go and are looking for this kind of insight. So I think the recommendations will be, would be welcomed.
I think also that we've discussed this is a US issue, and it's different internationally, just because the different legislation is different in different countries. But the first protocol for any mission is the COSBAR policy itself, which categorizes the bodies that we're interested in and less interested in. I mean, John discussed earlier about, you know, the five, Mars and Cetus, you know, Europa, Triton and Titan. And everything else is kind of of a lower level of concern from a planetary protection point of view. And so, you know, the implementation is less stringent, it's essentially documentation only.
So I would just like to say, I was going to sort of echo what you just said, Eric, and it's in terms of the COSBAR panel meetings are open, and people can come and hear what is said there and what is discussed, and also contribute to the conversation, because I think this is a two-way procedure. Because we, on our side, would like very much to reach out, but we don't necessarily know whom to reach out to. But it would be an expansion of what I said before in my talk, that our meetings are open, and we want this knowledge to be distributed and to be heard and have this kind of conversation. So it would be great if the private sector, commercial sector, and other people would attend our meetings. We have, in the past, had our business meetings and planetary protection sessions at the COSBAR General Assemblies every two years, but now it's going to be more often that we have this kind of meetings. And it would be great if people who are interested in those guidelines, that they come and contribute.
So we have a question over here.
Thank you for the presentation. My name is Sahu. I'm very curious to know, like, we all do realize that we are at the very beginning of the space research. of the space research. And what actually, what I'm actually asking is, on what are we basing this Planetary Protection Act? Like, we do realize that it has to be changed, because we do not have solutions. We have some ideas. Do we have a set of ethics on which we are basing our planetary protection policies or our Outer Space Treaty? And what are these ethics, and who has formulated them?
I guess echoing what both John and Jim said in their talks, the two principles that we have in mind and we have to abide with is, for one part, and I don't know if you call them ethics or goals or objectives, but it's, on the one hand, that anybody who's doing scientific investigations of bodies out there that could harbor current or past or be precursors for future life be protected and not jeopardized during the exploration in question. And the other, on the other hand, as you also heard, the Earth must be protected. And from that is from the potential hazard of anything that these space missions could bring back, whether in sample return or just by simply having visited a body. These are the basic things that we work with. If you, this is the COSPAR, at least what the Planetary Protection Policy acts to bring the reference to the other countries. If there's another philosophical ethical aspects that you're talking about, it's...
Yes, I think what you are mentioning there, as the two points, are the objectives. And I think what I'm really missing is a very meta-understanding of our ethics with which we actually go out in fringe outer space. And I think these ethics are something which I've been looking for and not really finding. These are objectives, and I understand them. And because it's so volatile, the kind of research we are doing, with so many private sectors being interested in it, and we need to have a conversation which is dynamic, but this dynamic conversation has to be built on a foundation which is based on ethics and philosophy.
You should see me after the show here, and I've got a presentation that I can share with you that I gave in 2010 at a COSPAR workshop that looked at the ethical considerations associated with space activities, from the standpoint of right of different ethical frameworks. And in particular, you know, kind of harkening back to some of the discussions that had been had when people were trying to figure out what to do with a potential dam over the Hachetchee Valley so that drinking water could go to San Francisco, that sort of thing. And so there are a number of things that we touch on in that, and, you know, it doesn't pay to go into all of them right now, but I'd be happy to share with you that presentation. There's also a book I would recommend called Beyond Spaceship Earth: Environmental Ethics in the Solar System by Eugene Harwood, and I can tell you more about that, too.
You have a question over here?
Well, thank you. Thank you for all of your presentations. I would like to point out a few points, a few legal elements, which for me seems quite important to be pointed out. First of all, there is some rules. And there is some rules, and the first one is Article Six of the Outer Space Treaty. In the Outer Space Treaty, Article Six, states are responsible for national activities in outer space. And it takes precise that it's not only for governmental activities, but also for private activities, because it says that it is whether they are conducted by governmental agencies or by non-governmental entities. It is a very fundamental rule in the legal system of the Outer Space Treaty. And then there is no difference whether the activity is conducted by a governmental agency or by a private company. If it's a private company, the state is still responsible for any wrongful activity which take place in outer space. And the states must authorize and supervise these activities, but not only they must authorize and supervise, but if there is something wrong, they are responsible for the damage which may be caused by the wrongful acts. So that's the first point. And it is absolutely, it is essential. It doesn't mean that it's not different for the U.S. or for any other state. Every state is responsible for national activities in outer space. It is extremely important to point that out. The second point is, is there rules in the treaties which precise what you can do and what you cannot do in outer space? Of course, the treaty is sixty, sixty-seven, so rather old, and there is no precise rules indicated what, to see what they can do and what they cannot do. But in fact, there is still Article Nine of the Outer Space Treaty, which means that states have to be aware of the fact that there may be some kind of pollution, detrimental effect, whether it is pollution of Mars because of what we can send on Mars, or risk of pollution on Earth, given the point of their return. So there is a very precise legal framework, and I insist on that. The states have an obligation, and not only an obligation, but also a responsibility. It means that if there is some kind of problem, if they, for sample returns, for instance, then the states are responsible for that. Perhaps we all of us are dead for, after that, but still they have to take care of that. And it is quite important to point that out. And if there is some private activity, there is no difference between private activity and public and governmental activities. All of them are national activities under Article Six of the Outer Space Treaty.
Yeah. So indeed, John covered that. You eloquently, I think, summarized that again. What's critical now is it's not just the space agencies, the national space agencies. We now have a commercial environment that we must be able to fold into the discussion. And so the discussion is also, how would we do that? How that would be a part of the dialogue, because indeed, the United States is responsible, as an example, for the activity of the government, being the NASA, but also of the U.S. companies within it. Exactly. Understood.
Before we get any further, we have about 10 minutes left, just to keep that in mind for the answers and the questions in general.
Just one word.
A question, please. A question, please.
Well, one point is that we have not enough rules, but it's a work of COSPAR to give us some precise rules. And then it is quite important to take care of that and to be aware that COSPAR has an immense role to do there in order to precise all the rules, and for instance, Article Nine of the Outer Space Treaty.
Indeed. As Anthea discussed, that role is indeed COSPAR that coordinates the international aspects that support the Outer Space Treaty. Okay? So let's concentrate on some questions.
Yeah. Gabriel Soney from the U.S. Department of State. I cover these issues back there. So since the Outer Space Treaty doesn't talk about planetary protection, but actually talks about harmful contamination, it almost sounds like we've been talking about this and as though the obligation is to prevent contamination. There's another word there, harmful contamination. So my question there is, have you done some thinking about how countries or other operators might judge what counts as harmful and what maybe we can live with? So for example, if we've already explored an area, maybe we can sort of contaminate it a little more than we could have before. Have you thought about, instead of having just categories for targets, categories of missions, like where along the exploration cycle do different levels of protection?
Yeah. Good point.
That's actually built into the whole COSPAR system, that there are certain bodies that it's okay to contaminate, and we don't really care, and certain bodies where contamination makes a difference as to whether or not you can have useful exploration activities and unlock the secrets of the solar system by going there. So if you erase the scientific data that may be available on Mars or Europa or Enceladus by contaminating them, certainly in COSPAR, you're going to call that harmful contamination. And I think anybody else who's just spent a billion dollars on a Europa orbiter would feel the same way. In terms of other activities, you know, the harm is in the eyes of the person who actually knows enough to realize when they're being interfered with, and that can take a number of different characters.
But I think your question was also about perhaps regions within a body. Because, for instance, if we go to Mars and we explore for long enough, we can then have a sort of a map where, as you said, there are special regions outside those special regions. There are perhaps regions where we have less of a potential to do contamination forward, backward. And this is something that is being explored, is being discussed. Some of these regions have been recognized to be important for future exploration by the current missions, and some of them are said, "Okay, well, you know, yes, you can land here with no high risk for contamination." And the people who will answer your question about harmful are actually the scientists, the astrobiologists who do all the work, and there's a lot of work being done about what is harmful. Petra Redberg is sitting here. She's an astrobiologist. She's been doing a lot of experiments on that. And those experiments continue also to decide what you were asking before, what's harmful and not.
It's important to remember that ignorance is not bliss, and there are a number of places in the solar system where we really don't have any idea what's really going on there. You talk about something like recurrent slope lineare on Mars, which appear to be water flow surfaces, more likely to be dry powder flow surfaces. If they were actually water flows, then you could very well have brine deposits and briny and salt crusts at the base of them. If you were to go to find out more about those and not realize that you're on a very fragile crust, you could easily imagine breaking through that crust, rolling your rover over down the hill, having it break open, release whatever microbes it had in it, and something that was just kind of an idle, "Let's go see if we can get a little closer to this." Turns out to be a real tragedy in terms of introducing Earth microbes into a Martian aquifer. Now, you know, we feel better when we find out that that isn't a Martian aquifer, and then we feel worse because it's not a Martian aquifer. But eventually, you know, we get enough information that we know how to feel about that.
We have time, perhaps, for at least one more question?
We have five minutes.
Okay.
I have a quick one, I think.
Yeah.
So Dr. Green, I heard you mention the word responsibility when we were talking with this gentleman who's just now left. But I was kind of curious about your definition of the word responsible. I could see the United States government being responsible for implementation of planetary protection policies and laws for commercial endeavors, but did that extend to liability? Should there be some problem with reentry or something coming back to her, that kind of thing?
That's a good question, and I don't have an answer for you on that. Indeed, the responsibilities that I was talking about was, as you mentioned, we're responsible for not only what the government does, but what our commercial environments and their approach. Right now, of course, there are a lot of planning to go to the moon. The moon is an unrestricted Earth return for materials, you know, so it has the lowest category of planetary protection, like indeed the asteroids Benou and Rugu that both United States and Japanese space agency are currently going to acquire samples in return.
One of the things, Dave, that you'll find out is that, you know, in Article Nine of the Outer Space Treaty, there are provisions for, you know, if you're going to do something that somebody else thinks might contaminate outer space in a way that's going to be adversely affecting them, then you're supposed to talk it out and communicate. There's also a thing called a liability convention, which talks more about who gets to pay for whatever problem you just caused.
It's a degree of what the problem is, understanding what...
Can you tell us about the liability convention much better than I can?
All right. Can we have, can we grab another one real quick? Yes. Samara.
Yeah, a quick one. Dr. Kustonis, if I pronounced that correctly. As COSPAR goes forward and looks at both hardware and the human, in possible human contamination, will you have different teams of folks who will address those different areas? How will that work? And are there medical doctors as well as planetary scientists? Just how is that going to work? Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. And we are very much determined on bringing the different point of views together in debate, because it's not just one person's, it's not a one-man show, and it's not one agency's show. And if you look at the panel composition today, I think it's on the website, you'll see that we have experts from all the different fields you've mentioned, from microbiologists to planetary scientists to medicine and so on and so forth, because otherwise, you're not going to get the expertise that you require. And so the idea is you put all of these teams together, they come up with the studies, and the outcome of the studies is presented to the panel, who can ask questions and interact with them and go further, decide whether more studies are needed and workshops are needed. And the workshops, I want to insist, are open, so people can come and contribute even if they're not in the panel or in the studies. And then we make a formal recommendation to the COSPAR Bureau. So yes.
And those create guidelines.
Yes.
Then the guidelines are stated, and each of the agency then takes those guidelines in and create the requirements necessary to satisfy those guidelines.
Yeah, and I just wanted to mention, as per to the previous question, that NASA has maintained compliance with the Outer Space Treaty by following the COSPAR policy so far, so far. So that's the way that things proceed, and then all the legalities that the gentleman back there kindly reminded us of that are perfectly correct, and thank you for putting them on the table. I had them in a small paragraph here, but I didn't get down to the legalities.
Well, I think with that, I'd like to close this special panel session, and I hope we can continue on with the dialogue, and thank you very much for attending.